Our agenda for tonight, any corrections or corrections to the agenda?
Yeah.
Corrections?
Well, it's good.
Number twelve should be section nine point one zero, not nine point one two.
Yeah, yeah.
Actually everywhere that that was.
Yeah, everywhere.
It's what we're like.
So sorry.
I'll sit over there next time, thank you. Anything else?
And excuse us as a packet, I thought last time we talked about the residential district hasn't changed also. Correct, three, is there residential district where it's supposed to put, about site, site kind of that included in this statement?
Yes, it was in the minutes.
So this should also include residential district nine point one five.
Yeah.
You're right.
Well, that's right. Sorry about that, folks.
I was gonna ask if that was in the call.
Right. Anything else? I have a motion to approve the agenda as corrected. So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Disgusting. opposed? Thank you. Agenda's approved. Now on to the minutes from May twenty one. Anything in the minutes that need, needs to be added, corrected, or updated? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes from May twenty one? So moved. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. May twenty one minutes are approved. This time we have an opportunity for public comment. Would you like to make a comment? Seeing no public comments tonight, we'll move on to Street's report for planning and zoning administration.
I'm trying to see what part thirty four I wanted to highlight. It's just been business as usual. A lot of permits for swimming pools and decks. People are, point of observation, people are not too happy about fencing, but are complying with the requirement. We had a good ZDA meeting. The discussion was helpful. I think I'll expand on that after Rick provides his summary. We're getting start, the township is getting started on, kickstarted the process for adopt, for master plan for parks and recreation. The goal is to complete, to adopt the master plan before Feb- February of twenty twenty six so that we will be eligible for applying for grants for twenty twenty six for the township parks, master plan for the parks and rec. Which we're gonna have a kickoff meeting tomorrow and then get started on that one. I think if any other, the board is making progress, one step at a time with regards to the private road ordinance amendment. Last night, it was made, clarity was provided that they wanted to keep working on, at least from my perspective, what I'm hearing. They wanted to keep working on the ordinance at the board level. But, so I think we are going to go back with our original game plan that we are, our planning commission will be on standby. Once the board adopts a revised private road amendment, we need to, the planning commission need to make changes to the zoning ordinance to align with those standards. I reached out for help, members Zaluka and Member Klein Smith and Brandt and Jeff to help me with coming up with the language that captures the discussion at the board meetings so far. And I thought the first meeting went really well. We made good progress, at least for all the standards for the roads, new roads moving forward. And we had a good discussion with regards to how to address the non-conformities that exist, non-compliances that exist right now. That was it. Any, any other, any items you want me to spend a little bit more?
I'm going to bring up my pet peeve question again. So our friends on River Drive were supposed to be moving at the end of December, maybe, I think the last time, first of May, and they're still there.
They are.
Making improvements?
Yes.
Making improvements?
Oh, yeah, they're doing a lot of construction.
Yeah, they're starting to.
Couple of stuff.
Last I heard Chuck was putting together a letter of violation. I think he was making one last step to communicate with them. I will check with Chuck where we stand on that.
Yeah, could it be? It's almost like they're slapping the township on this.
Yeah, the discussion's kind of restarting every time a new improvement officer comes on, but we are keeping track of all the meetings, deadlines, and advances. I think they're getting close to.
She'll be sitting for five months. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Street?
Have a question. Well, and also a comment on page two where it says ongoing ordinance amendments. I believe that number one, number four, number five are all done now, right? The board has approved them? Didn't they approve number four?
That one was put together before the board reading, so that was not updated, but.
Uh-huh. So this is good. This is positive.
This is positive, yeah.
And also the keeping of animals ones can be updated because they asked us to help them?
Yes.
And my question is about the last section. So those two comments appear every month. So are there any updates or, I mean, I don't know why they, they're still there.
Just waiting for board's attention on those two items. No, there haven't been any updates. We did talk about the fee schedule on and off internally with Mike. One, when we talked about the ZDA applications and everything, but then just because boards working on private road amendments and then we also have other amendments ongoing, that was just on hold. They're just staying there so that we don't forget about it.
Just like the others need to come up, they'll get to the top of the list. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Street?
I got a couple. On page, okay, page eight of thirty two. Yeah, described on all these permits and stuff. The one that says other, what, has, has others followed a permit category? What do they do on? The right miller pace?
I'll have to check into that specific one. Usually the BSN A allows a couple of options. When the option is not there, I remember I may make a point to revise that. That must have been a... Oh, that's an exemption. PE stands for exemption. They must be doing placement remodeling or something that doesn't require a permit. But typically, there shouldn't be other. I update the system every time it's not in the standard list of items, I add it to the list.
Alright.
But in that particular case, I think PE means it's an exemption. Which means they just checked in with us to make sure they were, they are compliant with the standards, even though they don't require a variance.
Right. I just asked you about number ten. The other thing is what Fontaine's landscape, has that been elevated, anything?
So.
Which is a call for Fontaine's non-maintains of the properties. You know, they, you can, you can revolve their special use permit, but not being are approved.
I will, I will, I will draft a letter and send it to Chuck because I know it's on his table where it's on the list, but because I think that makes sense now that you said, because I was part of it, I can cite the right sections and give him a.
Street, one more thing. On page two, under Republicans and Keeping of Animals, where you have high priority for supplementies and above tables. What is the definition of high priority and meaning? When does this have to get worked on?
Yes, when I put that high priority, I was trying to get board's action, which I got, and then they sent it to you guys. And you're right, we will, we've got to schedule the review meeting to start working on it.
Anything else, commissioners? Thank you for your work.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I'm sorry. I think the reason why it, it's not at the top of the list yet is just because, I think we were gonna listen, the plan was to listen to the training first before we come and get together on the draft language. And the Paul's daughter is available for, to train us at the July meeting.
That's great.
She's a veterinary.
Oh, that guy, yeah, 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 got you, got you.
Veterinary.
Got you. No, that's right. Okay, I didn't know.
So I was just trying to align ourselves with that one. I'm sorry. That's why. It's still a priority.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody. But we got to the board report from last night.
So last night, we did some road permits, application review, Velvet Ridge, that's a new construction, Fox Lane, and Wheeler Drive, which is off of seventy-five twenty-three Webster Church. So the first one was, was relatively easy. Velvet Ridge, they, they're meeting all the criteria for private roads. The second one got a little bit dicier, but that one moved along, I, I believe as well. There was a couple points that needed to be made, but not much. But the third one, that one was not complete, not ready to go. So they needed to provide a lot more information. We adopted the, or had resolutions, as you know, for the stormwater management regulations from here and the natural features of backstage. So those passed, went through. We heard you about getting them done. And I believe we're gonna see, you know, two or three of those every time, or more if, if we've got openings. Of note, the, there's, we're looking at an AV system in here. For those, I know some of you were here last night, but it's as far as getting basically boards and screens on the walls and a mobile one. And also another screen up front as you walk in the lobby that's gonna have the schedules on instead of the printed paper stuff. This is allowing us for, for presentations, so they can actually be Bluetooth or Zoom to the screens and everybody can see it. The audience will be able to see either side, will be able to see it without actually turning around and looking to the back. And I believe there was four more microphones?
Yes.
Yeah, so more microphones too. Where in the board meeting we run short. Let's see. Legal services, of note, we're looking at possibly getting somebody in specifically for research. So something if we're, if we're looking at researching language or things like that to possibly help with. And maybe shopping around for other legal services in general.
So that's a staff position?
No, it's contractor, just like we initialled. So part of that is when some, when we send something to our current attorneys, it's like they're learning it new and they're not necessarily research attorneys. So looking at the language of stuff that's, is, or researching it is not always the best for them.
So would we just switch to a new service provider for attorney services?
We, we may look at multiples. So different, you know, depends on the task. It's the same thing. You try to get the best contractor that you can, so you don't get a plumber to come and do your electrical. So if one of them is specific for a specific thing, we'll be looking at doing that. So, which you don't always get when you get a firm, so they provide who they have, not necessarily a specialist, so. But that's still, that's still up in the air. That part's up in the air. The attorney that they recommended for research last night got voted in.
I, I left it in.
Yeah, it was four to three. Let's see. Oh, and the last thing I think that's really of relevance is, we talked about the attorney's attendance at the ZDA. That may be changing, but right now it's required by a board resolution and we have a passing board resolution to change that to where they may have it. So we're looking at how much they need to be there, when, but it's gonna change. So part of that is we have attorneys that are coming from like as far away as Lansing and we're paying gratifying. So it's expensive. That's about it.
I have a question on the AV system, even though I was here for that discussion. There's a lot of things being talked about. Does it also include the ability for people to watch at home as a participant, like zoom into the meeting?
No, I don't understand.
No, okay. I don't, I don't think so.
No, they talked about it, but it was deferred. So the AV system is essentially just so audience have a screen, you have a screen, and one computer, whoever the presenter projects to those two screens.
The reason I ask is I've, I've been to a couple other PC meetings at other towns around here. And two, they're substantially smaller than we are. You have a camera in the back of the room and people can watch it. Like many things in the city meeting discussion last night, it's like, if you're gonna do it, do it once and get it done.
Yeah.
But then there was a discussion about being part of the building.
Right.
And I wasn't quite sure where that landed.
Yeah.
I mean, just in personal interest, that's all.
I think it can be added. I don't, I don't think it's a, not a, a hard thing to do.
Yeah, it was not like this ignored or anything. It was just, didn't make it to the discussion level, but it was proposed.
Especially most of those, most of those screens that roll around, I know in a lot of places, I've been in a lot of places, that those actually are used for Zoom meetings and stuff.
I don't know if you hear, what's one on North Territory, maybe four fifty-two?
Wenton.
Yeah, that did, yeah. There's just a camera in the back of the room. It was like, wow.
Oh, I remember. I think it required, it needed some, a little bit of research because when you are wanting to provide that service, you should also have a dedicated person who's able to do this, you know, the streaming and everything. So that one included a little bit of research Mike was gonna do to see what it, what it involves, because.
They're being able to do anything. It's, it's live and whatever shows on the screen appeared it's.
I have TV things. Cyos doing that too.
Yeah, Cyos.
I, I do wanted to, wanted to add a couple more relational comments in regards to the stormwater amendment of the NFIS. The board has adopted ASZs. Didn't even change a comma, didn't even change a period. ASZs, as the way you recommended. So that was, that was good.
Yes.
They did ask one question. I thought it's probably worth sharing with all the planning commission members when it came to stormwater management, the applicability of it. Because they were just talking about private roads and talking about some drainage issues. They asked us, how does this Article fourteen apply to private roads? And then I told them it doesn't, because the way it's written right now, it only applies to documents that require a site plan approval. However, pointed out that that brings up what's missing in the current private road ordinance and what should be added as we work on the draft. Adding some standards that, that are, that put in, that put into stormwater management, that put into natural feature protections, and making references to Article sixteen and Article fourteen in private road ordinance. I just wanted to share that, that, you know, ASZs, no changes.
I have a question about that. So Velvet Ridge.
Right.
We were talking about, why isn't that a site plan? But my question, based on what you just said, is what standards for stormwater management apply to something like that? Because they're taking, they're draining water across multiple lots. Is it only the county? Or do, what parts of our, our ordinance apply to that?
So we do have some general standards that talk about roof and surface drainage under residential standards. Broadly apply to that, but what was advised by our attorney when we were looking on the languages that drainage, drainage issues across private properties is subject to the Drainage State Law, Drainage Act. So unless we specifically have standards to include it, it, it reverses back to private disputes between two property owners. But again, same question was answered, asked in different terms. We don't have any standards right now. So we should include standards so that this question, this concern is addressed, at least for future.
And where would those be?
Private road. They can be in, I think our stormwater management standards are very much specifically geared towards documents because we are tying our review with Wasna County Engineering. So when it comes for a private road, it's not tied with Wasna County Engineering. So we should have standards that are specific to private roads, which will be reviewed by our engineer.
So, yeah, I think you mentioned that in your presentation at the beginning about what could be added.
Right.
Because there's also no reference to Article sixteen anywhere.
No, not so.
And what about wetlands? What about, yeah, surface water?
But, yeah, we talked about that a little bit. So what I've been doing is I just, because I'm aware of this connection, even though it's not there, if I come across any, I only came across ones. I point out that, you know, you need to go to Eagle to get a permit because you are close to wetlands. But there's nothing in the ordinance where I can say you have to do this, but I can only give them friendly reminders and push them towards DNR or wetlands.
But it does make sense to modify the private road ordinance to, to reference, either reference our own ordinances or add something more specific for stormwater. So I think that was a good, important discussion.
So we did have a focus meeting on, in June, and then we had three standards that specifically talk about what you said. And then in my, quoting my own words, I said Kay's gonna be happy when she looks at that app.
Hey, Jeff, the audiovisual system, does it have an ability to record?
No, as far as I know. Well, I don't, I don't think it does because we don't have a camera necessarily on it. The, the one module is, is gonna be touchscreen, so that has a computer system with it. So maybe. I, I haven't seen the specifics on it. Bill's, Bill's really the one you gotta ask.
I don't think there's computer, it's all tied to whoever's presenting that scope to that post screen.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not necessarily a system like you think. It's, it's really just the visual.
Just presents.
It's like a monitor.
Just, yes.
It's like a dual monitor.
Displays.
Yes, just displays.
Projects.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, any of, any of the other bells and whistles, I'm not certain about.
I also had a question about that. I'll just talk about presentations. We generally don't have presentations. It's pretty rare here. And if there's a map or something, so is it envisioned that we would project the packet? Because actually, if we suddenly make presentations from the packet and it's different, I find that really annoying, right? So we would just project the packet. If there's supplemental stuff or a map, okay.
Yes, so the idea is that whatever you're looking on your page, it's projected on the screen so that residents can also see what page you're looking at.
So we would use that a lot.
Yes.
And occasionally we'd have a map if there's a site plan review or something, yeah.
Right. And then also for next amendments, what I've always liked in other communities is where I was able to project the word document on the screen and then making edits while we're talking about it so that, or making notes, that you know that, okay, she got it, she catch her back.
That's what we.
That's good. That's good.
Yeah, it's, it's well needed. I mean, we need it. We move into the.
I just didn't want to suddenly have presentations that were different than what I had in the packet for everything.
No. It's really useful for ZDA, if I can project the plans.
Yeah.
And then because it has a touchscreen option, the resident can come in and, you know, play around on the screen indicating this is where my house is and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Now we're gonna have to get rid of our own slide projector and our overhead. That's all I got.
Do you have some of that topic?
Thank you.
ZDA report, Mr. Klein Smith? Well, in, in June, early June, we had, we had two requests for variance, one on eighty-four ninety-one here in River Drive. They're seeking a dimensional variance, not meeting the front yard setback from a primary road. The AFC was, was proposing to demolish the existing house and build a new single family on, on the property. It's on our one, and it's only one four six, six, point four six of acre. That proposal, there's, there's circumstances. Basically, our zoning says if, if you demolish more than fifty percent, you're gonna bring out the current standards. They should have posted houses on a minimum driver's, if they're too close to the road anyway. Some of the board members thought that they could move it back a little bit, get the drainage field in the back and the sub-vent tank, but they have to put a drainage field anyway, part of the county. So that was tabled for, they were gonna get more information on everything, on what they plan on doing. The other one was eighty-four old, by here, River Drive, and that's like a similar situation. It's a non-conforming, legal non-conforming structure. And they wanted to put an expansion or extension of a house, the, the structure that they were planning on building. Then all the setbacks, all behind the house, so you get, you know, the setback and, and the side yard setback and everything. So that burdened those three of them. Three questions for it.
I didn't quite hear the end of that break, so why, you said something about setbacks. I didn't hear, what about the setbacks?
On the second one?
Yeah, second one.
Oh, well, the addition was on the back of the house. And that addition meant all the setbacks, the side yard, the front yard. It was just an addition on the back of a non-conforming, legal non-conforming structure. So, you know, the primary road is a primary road. And if you look at them, all the houses down there, they're, they're all non-conforming because they're too close to the, they don't have a proper setback off the, on the primary road. So anytime they do anything down there, it's expanding a non-conforming structure, so it's gonna come to us.
Thank you.
Anything else for Rick? I'm seeing none. The PDR report, never talked to your packet. I have a question on that, if there's anybody that's taking minutes. The person who was absent seconded a motion. So I don't know if that's like movie Ghost or somebody that's like coming down. But.
I think it's a typo.
Says Nicole is absent, but Donna projected expenditures, says that she seconded it, that's better explained.
Maybe she came late.
And she wasn't absent. So anyway, I don't know, but, but we should repick that in our minutes or something, but.
Well, PDR minutes.
Yeah.
So the chair of the PDR committee has a touch of email. You just email it and say, oh, we noticed.
Well, if you could just replay, if that was noted in our minutes, then yeah, we'll wait.
But she'll never see it.
I know, but yeah, at least we have a reminder.
Oh, I can email it to her.
Okay.
Okay, great. And then that's the chain. And then that's the change.
So. Anything else anybody has on that one?
Yeah, Tom, in our, in our agenda, we call it the PDR Rights Commission. But in their notes, they're titled, "What Your Township Harland will base preservation board."
That's the official name.
Yeah, should we refer to it by its official name or not?
Well, Mr. Westman had that, PDR.
I think the nickname was more popular.
Yeah, I mean, PDR, it's way easier.
That's what everybody calls it.
Okay. Would you like to change? I, in our, I'm just saying, it's, you know. Does anybody on the commission want to change that? Doesn't look, doesn't look.
Excuse me?
No, like PDR.
Thank you, Jeff. It was just, it was just a question.
Okay, natural features committee, Kate, you have anything to bring to our attention?
Um, just one thing. June tenth, we submitted the Wasna County Conservation District grant to create the map Native Pocket Gardens. And we should know by the end of July. And otherwise, we started working on some other ideas and activities, but we don't have a plan yet, so I'll keep you in suspense till another meeting.
Thank you. Any questions of Kate and the board? Or the grants to go with the board? Thank you very much, Kate, I appreciate it. Uh, we have a public hearing scheduled tonight. Before I move that to you, do you wanna make any comments?
Um, I think it's just repeating the one that was pointed out earlier. The draft, uh, this included one small minor clarification revision to section nine point one five, which is essentially saying that non-conforming lots of record does not include lots within site condominiums. I'm just trying to figure out, after the public hearing, I might come up with the language, but I'm trying to figure out how to say it without looking like a long sentence. I don't have any comments. I did, uh, everything I wanted to say is in the memo that the last meeting, the planning commission asked for some, a little bit more context regarding the reclassification of temporary structures, uh, which was provided in the memo. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions before we open the public hearing?
You wanna do questions now or after?
Well, I'd like to do the map first.
Thank you.
Since we'll have the public comments by then. Anything else we wanna mention before we open the public hearing? At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing presenting draft discussion of section one, nine point one oh and nine point one five. For the four year ratio of non-conforming and temporary structures in Ag districts. Would anybody like to make a comment in our public hearing? Seeing none, I'd like to close the public hearing. And move on to discussion for the topic. Commissioners, anything that you would like to comment on our?
One thing. So, um, the change. So, um, now on page nineteen of thirty-two, there are the two categories that have been added to permitted uses. And they were under special abuses. And these category titles have been changed. Before, they were ultra-specific. And to me, this one, temporary structures residential, is rather general because it could be residential zone, residential district. So my suggestion is to say, if the issue is dwelling, so say temporary structures residential dwelling, every single one of those examples listed has the word dwelling in it. So I think it's a little general to me. Before, it was those really, really specific categories, which I think this is better, but maybe.
I think that's, makes sense. Item one, two, and three on page sixteen talks about removal hole, temporary dwelling when somebody's constructing a house, temporary dwelling when they're replacing something, part of the house or something. Number five also. Five also, it's a temporary dwelling for dependent persons, temporary dwelling for seasonal laborers or workers. So, yeah, that makes sense to say temporary dwelling.
Residential dwelling, is that what we're gonna say?
Uh, no, I think temporary, I think the word dwelling is key here.
I think that's a good, that's a good change. So, so we have the word dwelling.
I think we can just say temporary dwellings. And so saying.
So, hold on. Number twelve, say temporary structures dwellings.
Temporary structures residential dwellings for consistency, or, they are temporary structures, but they're for dwelling.
For different purposes, so I would, I would keep residential dwelling as one.
So all we're doing is adding the word dwelling?
I think so.
That, that would work for me.
Any other commissioners?
Yes, that, that was nice, that's easy.
Uh, section nine point one two B, which is the items, the, the link goes to the section that's titled Temporary Structure Permit.
Right.
So it's a temporary structure for temporary dwelling.
Residential dwelling.
I mean, like, it's not the primary, I think so.
But if you say temporary structure.
Right, right.
Then the use is either residential dwelling or dwelling. Okay.
You, you do realize that by having a permitted use, you're gonna see a lot more house trailers in the township. Before, because it was a per, uh, a special use, the township knew, because they had applied for a special use permit, the township knew where they were and could control them as far as when your residence was built, that they were removed. This, the way it is here, it's a permitted use, you're, you're gonna see a lot more in the township. And are they gonna be, are, is the township gonna know when the house is done that they're gonna be moved out or are they gonna be around that again?
Well, I have a question regarding timeframes on a previous page when we did it.
Uh, I think the link takes you to that section, Temporary Structure Permits. And the Temporary Structure Permits are subject to township board approval. So any of the items that are in that section, all the five we just talked about, they require township board approval. And before they install, they're also required to put in a refundable, uh, refundable deposit. And the structures are subject to the conditions listed in that section, which is they should be removed within one eighty days or some days when the use is no longer valid unless, the default time period for a temporary structure is one year, unless otherwise approved by the township board. So the reason why we took it away from special land use is because for somebody who's just trying to put a structure when they're constructing a house or something, they typically have to jump through two hoops. Come to the planning commission, try to get a special use permit, and then go to the board, get the permit. But I've looked through the last four permits that were issued by the township board for temporary dwelling purposes, none of them came to the planning commission. So that stuff was getting skipped anyways. It just makes sense to make that official. And then also, the fact that every one of those requires township board's approval, they're not going, like, they're not, they're, we have, we have a, we have a process in place to keep a check on them, to, uh, that where we, to hold them for the time, to hold them, to make sure that they're removed, to enforce the conditions.
And that brings up, I just wanna be clear, because when I'm looking at page sixteen of thirty-two, under permitted uses of nine twelve, they've all, none of them have a specific time period. So we're relying on section thirteen permitted uses to define those time periods that things are good for, one eighty days per year.
Section thirteen point one seven zero defines this, those uses, defines the conditions, defines the standards of approval, expirations, extensions, all that.
Okay. I just wanna be sure that they're in those sections.
It is.
And for the permitted uses, that are all the permitted uses on nineteen and thirty-two, all of them require some sort of permission and approval, right?
Right.
Permit.
Yes.
So it's not unusual in that they have to get some sort of permit.
Yes.
So we're back to where we were on page nineteen of thirty-two. Do we have a consensus to rename number twelve, E twelve, Temporary Structures Residential Dwellings?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I mean, we've gotten off of that topic more than once. Do we also then say on thirteen, a lot of residential dwellings? Or since it's not a dwelling, don't need that word in that phrase?
We don't need that word, it's not a dwelling.
Okay, that's, that's what I.
Sales office.
We can say non-residential use. Pardon? Non-residential use.
Yeah, that would be consistent, right?
That would be have some residential use.
Yeah. I like that, it's clear.
Thank you. I have one other question on those two lists. Some of them are underlined and some of them are not. The ones that are underlined links?
Yes.
And the ones that aren't?
Yes. So ones that are underlined have U standards in section twelve.
Okay.
You can have the online version instead of the blue and underline for more details.
I know, that's why I wanted to clear what we're, we're seeing versus.
What?
As far as, does it have blue lines? So here's my follow-up to that. Should, should we establish those links on the other ones before, and, before moving this forward? Because again, I've said this many times in this meeting, if I'm a new resident here and I'm going to get the link, and the one doesn't have a link, and I want a farm stand, now I have to go find something that's buried one eighty pages deep or call you and create work. So are we not doing our due diligence to take that extra minute and a half to create those links on, for those other sections? Again, back to a new resident. If I've lived here a hundred years, like it's like Kingsley, out of rock.
I'm quite not following.
There are a number of them that do not have links to go anywhere in the ordinances.
Because there is no standards. The farm market has.
Ooh.
Well, the meeting is adjourned.
I don't wanna drive home in the rain, but.
Maybe it'll go back on again.
It wasn't me, I promise.
Thank you.
If there's no link, that means there are no standards related to take them to. The only exception is farm market, which has a definition, but the links are only for standards in Article twelve.
Okay.
So that means there's no other information elsewhere in the zoning.
There are no additional standards.
Other than perhaps a definition.
So then come to you, and you make a determination?
Yes. That it's a permitted use. I mean, licensed home-based occupation has a whole ordinance. That's an, I don't know why it's there, that's another. Farm market has a definition, farm operation animals, farm operation cross. They all have definitions, but you're not linking them to that.
Are you gonna make a motion to put this down here?
That's ridiculous.
Light doesn't stop me. I keep going.
I just wanna make sure that what's there is correct and we have a way, either for you to administer it or for the person to find what needs to be done.
Yeah. But what did you say about farm market? Cause there is something.
There is a definition. The definition includes some standards, but there's no way to, I mean, I could link it to that specific page where farm market is, but it's not Article twelve.
Well, here, here's a question, or here's a suggestion, is, instead of underlining this stuff, can you have a, can somebody click on each one? And then if there is no additional link, and then when they click on it, it says there's no additional link?
These contacts are.
I.
Nope.
But that would be a lot of work.
Yeah.
But that's why, that's exactly, that's, that's part of being my point earlier, you're gonna overload or.
No, I mean, the online version clearly says, click on the link for more details. So if there's no link, there's no details.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I thought of adding section numbers when I was looking at it, link, and then also say C, section number, but then I realized I have to do that for all the other sections too. So at some point, I'll see if I can do that without amending it, just adding numbers. I'll see, I'll check into that. But no, links work, I do that.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification, I appreciate it. Anything else?
Yeah, so I think I was looking into the language. So for that, D four, where we talked about maximum floor area ratio on page twenty, floor area ratio for non-conforming lots of record, less than two acres in size, twenty percent period. This does not apply to lots within site condominiums.
Okay, I know you were wanting some communication with the committee to handle on farmer. Are you okay with this?
Um, but this is the Ag district.
Right.
But I thought we were adding that to the residential.
We're, we're gonna add to here and to nine fifteen.
Okay, can you say it again? Sorry, I, I didn't.
This, this does not apply to lots within site condominiums.
Oh, yeah, we talked about that last time.
The reason why I'm not adding not, less than two acres or non-conforming because all lots and large site condominiums are two acres. If they're less, that means they are in open space preservation, which is also conforming.
So we still have a floor for that, it's just not twenty percent.
Right, it's ten percent.
It's still far.
Right.
It's ten percent.
Ten percent.
Okay.
Oh, we could put that as a separate number by itself.
Yeah, actually, because the ten percent does apply to the site.
Ten percent.
So we just add at the end, it's a little confusing.
I'll just have to check. I don't think other numbers are referenced anywhere else, but I can just press enter after ten percent, make it a separate.
Yeah, so it'll be arranged in.
That makes sense, thank you. Just gonna start right here. This blue is gonna come out right.
So that's in four, IV. Where it talks about ten percent, then twenty percent, it's not gonna come to I.
Right.
Just to make sure.
It'll be read number.
And it'll also be added to the residential district.
Right. Nine point one five B, Roman numeral four. That talks about maximum lot coverage, thirty percent of non-conforming lots of record, less than one acre in size, we would say the same thing. This does not apply to lots within site condominiums.
Right. Low lot cover is not.
Right. I think the classification was in reference to the non-conforming lots of record.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, it's not far, it's for.
Yeah, they don't have. Yeah, they don't have non-conforming floor coverage for R two, R one.
Okay, now, we're in a different section now, the residential section?
No, one point five, but it's the same.
Can you? No.
No.
So there's no change to the residential?
We're not changing the number, we're just adding the clarification.
Ah, okay.
We're just adding the sentence, this does not apply to lots in.
Okay, that's nine, but one five B.
Four.
Four, we're just adding the clarification.
Right.
And why does it make sense there?
Um, I think the, the question was brought up, saying that not everybody knows exactly what lots of record means immediately. You have to go to the definition to understand what lots of record is. Lots of record is only those lots that are created using, you know, for, by plan or meets and bounds, through Land Management Act.
So my question is different. Here, under A, we have a ten percent value, but twenty percent is non-conforming. In the residential, we just have one number, twenty percent.
Right.
So why wouldn't that apply to site condos? A regular number?
No, we're not adding the clarification to five, we're adding the clarification to four, the lots about lot coverage.
Oh, thank you. I totally looked at the wrong one, I'm sorry.
Because the clarification is for lots of record, not F A R.
Thank you. I, sorry, I totally looked at the wrong one.
I guess that would also apply to nine in that case then, or? Because that also has a reference to non-conforming lots of record.
Changing it to site condominiums?
The, the clarification sentence.
Do we have a definition of site condominiums in our ordinance?
Um, no, I'm, I'm. But we have a definition for lots of record.
Yeah.
I mean, we have a section that talks about site condos, four point nine five, four point eight five. But we don't have a definition for site condominium.
Uh-uh. That would be nice, so I don't have to keep asking, because I always forget.
A definition for site condo?
Why don't we make that a part of our discussion for the next meeting, we'll review that.
Sounds good.
Finalize the package. Sure you're okay doing it, adding it, coming up on the site condo definition, and we can agree this in our next meeting with the changes, we can add that definition.
Oh, does that mean we're postponing if I'm not allowed?
Yes.
Yeah, because then, then we have the whole thing, including the new definition, you go to the board, because the board could ask the same question. If you don't have a definition for site condo, then it comes back to us. Now we're another one that, and we have.
Right, I mean, I guess that clarification is just to make it more clear, we do have a definition of lots of record, so, but, I'm just looking out for the rest now.
Do we have residents certified by this right now?
Yeah, but there was one resident who got his CBA.
What?
But, that's what we dealt with, right? So we're moving this ass.
Oh, no, 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 that's fine, don't worry. That was not done with, yeah.
If we're twenty, I understand trying to push the bridge for now. And you got a way to handle that and demonstrate it temporarily.
Yes.
Then I'd be much more favored getting us right the first time, without questions from the board.
Sure.
Anything else to review on this tonight, before you, you revise this to bring back? Julie's got one?
I just, can we update and fix the memo? And the memo will go into the board. All the nine tens, or all the nine twelves need to be nine tens.
Right.
And then, like, section one.
Well, we need that nine fifteen also, which isn't included at all.
Yeah, the number one, section nine, ten, be permitted uses. And then special uses is nine point one zero C. So it's a different section.
Yes, I will take care of the memo when I need the changes.
Yeah, and then, then we also need the motion. There is good nine ten C. What if it's B, B C D, yeah?
Well, our motion is going to be postponed.
Post, yeah.
Postponed based on.
Then we have, the next time we have a review motion.
Right.
That is confusing.
Anything else we want to do before?
There are a few that have periods at the end, and then the other ones don't.
We want.
I'll do a, I'll do a sweep.
Yeah, I mean, all the old ones all have periods at the end, but then this version, only a couple of new, so.
So we can, something on the provision?
Yes.
Okay.
Here, I'll talk about it.
Shree, if you could just make a note and check those, please, thanks. Anything else? No, motion?
I want you to look at this again, after Shree makes these changes.
Sorry, Amber Rogers' definition for a second, I know.
Including all those, everything that we talked about.
Just a two-second, whatever she wants. Both Julie and I did, same deal, it's a two. Put it down.
If we have one.
I think she wins, right?
That's not cloud over there today, she's not that person, that's, uh, healthy today. We'll open a roll by Hall. Hi.
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 Hi, Ms. Far.
Hi, motion carried. Thank you very much. Missengers and Shree here, helping us do this. Nothing simple as our reason. Uh, we have no old business tonight, we do have some new business, Article three. Shree has another memo for us that starts on page twenty-five, thirty-two. Missengers, if you have anything to retrieve, you want to give us any background before we open up our questioners?
Nothing to add than what's not in the memo. Like I said, this is mostly to simplify and clarify, make sure it's easy to understand what the process is, what the order of the process is, what the expectation is, which is consistent with what I've, I've been doing at the office. Anytime where the language is applicable, I use the same one from the existing ordinance. Some, sometimes I revised it. This does not change or adding any new requirements. The only requirement that is new, which is not in the existing ordinance, is the permit exemption. Which is what we discussed with the accessory structures, I just put it in here. Option here.
Would you like to talk about anything?
I felt like in a couple of sections, there were a lot of changes, so I would like to talk about those sections. I think things have changed, things are, have been omitted, yes. And so I would like to go through the middle detail.
I'm sorry, I have to interrupt this for one minute, and maybe we'll change how we do this. What would help me a lot, in this, Missengers, I think, is if you took the existing ordinance and put strike throughs on the stuff we deleted, maybe you deleted some stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Moved a lot of stuff around to different sections. I have a hard time following what was kept, what was new, and what was deleted, so I'd like to see the old organs with crossouts, what was kept, and then highlighted in the new organs draft, what's brand new, what we added. And rather than discuss it today, get that information, follow us in that discussion.
That would be great, because I ended up like making a copy and trying to go back and forth.
That's a lot of change, I think that's, it's similar to, um, other amendments, maybe replace them in its entirety, it's, if I do strike through, um, I try, I try, but I think there were a lot of things that were moved around.
So for example, I think there were references to our own zoning ordinance in the, in the old one, like Article fourteen, and now I can't find any references to our own zoning ordinances. And then in section plot plan, I think there was a lot more in the old one. I mean, so I feel like either I can't find it, or it changed, or it was removed, or something. So it would be helpful to have greater clarity on that.
I have a, I say no to the top, I have trouble figuring out.
But the organization is awesome.
Yeah.
It's much better organized than this sort of paragraph form that we have.
What I can do is, a strike through might be confusing and hard, because I tried to do that. What I can do is, I can go with each subsection, like if I talk about applicability, I can add notes saying, how is it different or anything from the ordinance?
But if you just take this and strike out anything that you didn't include here, and then you also have a new one.
You know what she can print out, if you, you know, what, I think it's in Word. Yeah, where you can look at the strikes on the right-hand side with a coffin and the.
There were too many.
No, but at least she could bring the coffin.
I think I get, I get what you're trying to ask me, I'll try my best. If it just getting, starts getting too cluttered, I'll try to find a way to explain that to you in a better way.
But you could have two documents even, still.
Right, right.
One where you show what you took out, and one where you show what's there.
But just to comment in the, in the side, like, like we went through when we were doing the master plan. It's like, yep, that's a change, that's not a change. Remember, it was always an arrangement, calling me that little.
I sure do, because.
Yeah, you know, whether it helped, but that was, if she was striking them, then no.
Hope y'all kind of aren't.
I do have some questions in this. Does anybody, aside from that, does anybody have a comment in this? Because I do, mostly for specificity and clarity. Am I allowed to talk? Okay, well, I'm gonna.
Then ask the chair.
So.
Yeah, so we're going to go through some sections and.
Well, I, I just, just think it's clarity, even though she, they weren't in the original Wordless either, and not there either here, but there's, for example, on page twenty-seven, thirty-two, down under E, there are forms with signatures, but there's no list of whose signatures are required. And I had one back, if I'm a new person coming in here and I want a zoning permit, what signatures do I need without having to call Shree and have her call back, because she's been intervening? Or whoever, it takes a while. So, so, and they're there, but they're buried in the paragraph. And my old style is like, put some little points, like, here are the signatures required, point, point, point. Because right now, they're buried in the little paragraph, so just for clarity, that's. Then the other one I have is on twenty-eight or thirty-two, under board approvals.